Good evening, call to order the June twenty second meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission, take roll call, please.
Chair Hartzell.
Here.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Don Selm.
Here.
George Jones.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
And Sean Nielsen.
Here.
Please join me in pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the by the United States of America and to the Republic of Florida stands by nation under your honor in this small with the next season for all.
All right, on tonight's agenda, we have no public hearing cases and we have a work session concerning the short term rental draft ordinance. Karen, do we have any presentation?
Uh, just, um, yeah, little one. You had in, uh, that was sent out to everybody was, uh, an updated version of the proposed ordinance that included all of the appropriate modifications and changes based on your guidance at your last work session, uh, from June eighth. And within that you did, I said, it was a red line copy, even though it was blue, um, that shows exactly what language changes were made. And at this point, as far as I am aware, the only thing outstanding is actually determining how you would like to set caps. And with that, um, I do want to share my screen and I'm going to, uh, the chart that came out to you all that shows, um, by, and you had some of this data beforehand, um, that shows, uh, by zone district, uh, vacant lots, developed lots, the total lots within each of the zone districts. Uh, the STR as a percent of developed lots as a percent of total lots, uh, the actual number of STR units, and that's based on, um, the current data, which was what was requested by, uh, city council, uh, from their work session on June first. And then for context, provided what you guys had recommended as caps, uh, back from the planning commission recommendation in September of twenty twenty two. And then from council direction on June first, what they were suggesting as caps for these different districts. And then from your last work session, you all had started talking about wanting to, uh, break apart primary residence, uh, STRs versus those, uh, that are non-primary residents or is maybe a, a commercial type, type situation. So, uh, we did go through, um, the data we had and extrapolated all that for you. So you see that in the gray part, the gray and white part of the chart here in the middle of the page, where it's broken apart by the number of actual STR units in each of those zone districts. What that looks like is as a percentage of developed lots or total lots. And that's for both primary residents and then the non-primary residents. And then where we concluded at your last work session, you were leaning towards, uh, wanting to, um, have no cap for primary residences, but a cap on the non-primary residents. And you had talked about possibly reducing that number lower than what the, the actual number of licenses is at this point. But there was not a clear direction provided in terms of how much of a reduction. So what you see in this chart down at the bottom here where it turns to, to yellowish tones is, uh, just a flat number based on the actual number of non-primary residence STRs operating right now. And then I've got some blanks in there, uh, that I would fill in depending upon which wrote, uh, route you chose, uh, to set the caps. And that's what we would then plug into the ordinance, you know, when that, that provision, I think it's on page three. Yes, page three, uh, where the, the caps are actually established, the appropriate number, but this is partly worksheet, partly data, all that for, for your use here this evening. So that's what I have in terms of what's before you. As far as I'm aware, we're down to just finalizing what those caps should be in the ordinance. Um, and I need that recommendation this evening so that we send you back out immediately a packet and get it posted on the website, since we actually have the public hearing on this item scheduled for next Thursday at six thirty PM in this room.
Very good. Thank you, Karen. So. Yeah, Karen. Real question is establishing what our target numbers are or limits are. And I know that's in discussion that we should be reducing that number from what the current level is on. Okay, question, I, I have a variety of small nits, typos and little issues and such too. Should I, should I do those first or should we save those for the end or something?
It's the chair's prerogative.
Let's go ahead and get those off the table. Right. First off, one, there's a general category of things which I did not try and correct because there's various ways one can do it and I really, I don't know if our city attorney is listening in now, but perhaps could, could address it. Review the use of the terms license holder compared to licensee compared to short term business license holder compared to short term rental business licensee compared to business license holder. Consider, alright, they're, they're all used. Um, in gen, I, I think particularly because I already know what the intent is, I don't really have a problem figuring out what was meant. But if you start comparing this, it would be better if it was a little more systematic and done there.
Okay.
The, the concept of the, uh, short term rental business license where those are all together, that is created as a capitalized term. No other ones, it's in, well, one of the twenty nine cases it's used, it's not. But all other defined terms are generally not capitalized and that's typically the practice in our ordinances. So i- in any event, um, there's also, um, the term license is added as a short firm after short term, um, rental business license per end quote license. And then it's not really used.
Oh, as license, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's a variety of things one could do to tighten, to tighten that up and, and I didn't propose to do it because there's lots of choices, but maybe our city attorney could, could look at that, if not for our next Thursday meeting in have it available when the city council finally considers what they're doing, because that's not something that's really suitable for commissioner, council work on. Went to other ones, um, there's a defined term for lodging tax. Says the tax levy pursuant to chapter three point thirty eight. That's, as best I can tell, that's used only one place in the ordinance. Paragraph A at the top of page six, where it says failure to pay this lodging tax pursuant to this chapter three point thirty eight of the code. In other words, it repeats the same definition, which means we can delete the definition entirely. It's it, it's, it's self-defined where in one place it's used. In, see page three, five twenty two oh two oh G. Um, beginning of it, in order to get to our numbers, we need to take a few more words out. Um, refers to the maximum number shall not exceed the applicable cap or applicable number of dwelling units within such zoning district. Doesn't, if we're not doing a percentage, it doesn't need all of that. So we should delete or applicable number of dwelling units because it's just a single number.
Hmm.
And five twenty two oh two oh H, which is the next paragraph down below that. Um, assuming we keep continuing the approach which we, uh, which looks like we're adopting, uh, about not capping, capping the primary residence owners. We don't need the third sentence, which gave the primary residence owners a foot, a place ahead on the waiting list. Because they're, they're not, they're not on a waiting list anymore. So as, as long as we keep the concept that they're not capped, we don't need that sentence. If someone, if we or the city council were to change it back, I would hope that sentence would stay in giving them that preference. Let's see. Um, page eight. Eighteen point seventy eight point oh five oh B two. Oh, well, that's that's a real small one, you know. Others, um, a couple of them first, third line from the end of that paragraph two, near the top of page eight, structures is a typo. There's a g, extra G in there. And it should be, and then this goes without installed water, power and sewer facilities. I think we want to make sure. I don't think we're giving them a choice which ones they don't install, so it should be and. In next paragraph, following that paragraph three. It said no short term rental, the term is no short term rental unit, so the word unit needs to be added. Um, similarly in paragraph four, refers to the number of, minimum number of, maximum of occupants permitted in a short term rental, it's permitted in a short term rental, insert the word unit. In B, in B six, if we've got two or more bedrooms, we have a, we should write a minimum of one parking space per bedroom, not a total of one, we're not prohibiting them having extra, extra parking spaces. And the beginning of the sentence refers to a minimum too, so just for parallelism, avoid limiting it. The word, if that's clear, the word total should be minimum. Um, in B seven. Okay, uh, similar to what was happened before, when we're not doing a percentage, we should delete or applicable percentage of the total number of dwelling units within. So the sentence would read, the number of short term rental units in a zoning district shall not exceed the established cap for such zoning district as established in chapter five twenty two. Let's see. In. Oh. A suggestion, this isn't so much mere clerical one, but we repeat a fairly long paragraph about distance here. What we do with the caps, we say in this section, no, the zoning section, no more than the caps allow in the business section. It's probably easier in the distance to say no distance, no greater than is allowed in the section, so we don't have to repeat the full text. So one could write, um, a to say, um, no short term rental, sorry. Actually, I've got a different paragraph.
I understand what you're saying and I would actually suggest that that distance separation in full detail needs to appear in title eighteen since, um, that's where it really does get analyzed in terms of, you know, the zoning sign off. So it's actually back in title five where you're talking about potentially shortening that, um, to, 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 I understand.
Okay, then would that same apply for caps as well?
Um, it would be the inverse on the caps since the cap relates to the license itself, which is under five and in my.
Just didn't need to be in both.
Yeah, no, I understand where you are and, and which one needs to reference the other and I, I, it's clear to me and, um, I'll, I'll make sure that I follow up with our attorney.
Okay, um, in section seven, there's an important, an important omission. If the license holder, current license holder applies within two months of the effective date of the ordinance, the prohibition of short term rental business in certain zoning districts or the distance restrictions within sections, the two sections listed and it should probably be just one of those sections, whatever is the applicable one. Shall not apply to such new rental business license applications. There's actually three things. The prohibition of short term rental in certain zoning districts, the distances, and the caps established in chapter five point twenty two. These are the thing. This is, this is saying if, if there's an existing, there is existing non-primary residence, short term rental unit. If it, if it promptly reapplies, it can, and it can continue doing over and over again, notwithstanding what, notwithstanding that it's might not be allowed in a certain zoning district, notwithstanding the distance restrictions and notwithstanding the cap. It doesn't, it omitted the reference to the cap here.
Okay.
So basically after, after the red text that said in the distance restrictions, it should say and the caps established in chapter five point twenty two.
Okay.
Okay, um, oh, in section eight, there's a typo by, by annual review, get review spelled correctly, and the last line of that maximum needs to be spelled correctly as well, another typo. Anyway, I, I consider those largely to be editorial items. One other substantive item before we get back to the, um, cap numbers and such. Um, I wanted to ask for clarification if people thought about it. Uh, we talked about the distance restriction. Does he, as it's written now, the distance restriction would apply to primary residence short term rentals, because it doesn't exclude them. Is that the intent? And I just, just asking you, because I.
The intent is that it applies to any short term rental.
Okay, as.
Just as parking does, just, you know, just as those other requirements about operating as a short term rental.
Okay, now, I, I was just, just asking if people understood that, because we're, we're, we're trying to be generous to those circum- situations. But if that, as, as written, that does apply.
Yeah.
I just, okay.
To address the density, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe somebody else should start first on the subject, I haven't talked too much, but.
Lee, do you have all those, uh, written down?
I, I had, I have, yeah, I have a printer problem, so I've, I can send them to Karen.
That would be lovely.
Just send them to Karen, yeah.
And I will share with our attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, any other clarifications or corrections and, uh, make sure I updated beyond what Mr. Brown has shared with us.
Yes, on page five. Under C five. It says within the last twelve months, there should have been no more than two. And to be consistent with the other, I was just talking about violations, add the word cited. C I T E D.
Yeah.
Cited violations and I, one more, let's see if I can find it real quick.
Um, there may be a technical reason for why that does not appear that way, um. Because I don't know that citations are issued related to business licenses uh, versus the paragraph above where those types of violations potentially do end up with citations.
That's fine.
But, um, well, well, so what comes back may not make that adjustment, but we'll double check that.
Okay. And the good neighbor violations may not be cited either.
Exactly, so it, it really is getting it the right term, the appropriate terminology for what's, what's being addressed.
So where are the jurisdictions?
A lot of, um, and a lot of what the good neighbor stuff is, is potentially looking at goes back to what, uh, we would call nuisance violations. So that's things like noise, um, parking, uh, trash cans, you know, being not put away or in accordance with the, the, that particular ordinance we have at the city of those, those kinds of things, um.
When any of these have these reports, like if someone called and something like, please, yeah, please.
Potentially some of them, yes. The key there is somebody has to call.
Right.
And then it is officer discretion with what, in terms of what they, they do when they go out and respond to a complaint.
Okay.
Anything else, Laurie?
No, that's it. Lee covered everything else, so. Highlighting the, the units and so on and so forth.
Are there any other comments on that? So then, uh, we'll come back to you, Lee. We had the, having a discussion about the perspective on what the limits might want to be.
Well, um, I guess I wanted to follow up on, I think the point that Karen mentioned, we had talked about last week, is the, um, the question of the nu- the number, essentially as we structured it, the we have a number of non-primary residence um, STRs in each, in each of the applicable zones and a primary, and primary residence with an effort to not, to not constrain the primary residence ones, which are a much smaller factor in any event.
Uh huh.
Um, true, the base rate would be the current minus the non-primary residence giving a number. Um, my sense is, and see some of this is, I guess I'm smarter than I was a year ago. That I think the citizens have demonstrated, and this is something we can listen to the hearing as well um, next week. But I, my sense is that the citizens demonstrated a, a dislike, a, a dislike for STRs, and I think especially com- commercials or non-residence STRs. Um, by structuring the cap in this way, we don't limit the primary residence ones, but we make, we can put a cap on that is less than the current number of STRs, allowing those STRs to continue to operate for a period, whatever period of time they continue to still own the place. Um, and we would have a a, a potential now to over time reduce to whatever number we put in. And this isn't going to happen overnight, take over time, so it'd be an opportunity for the city council to review and the citizens to look at it over the period, over a period of years to see what's happening is what's, what's the demand for these, what's the view of the public and otherwise. Um, give, given the remarkable referendum that was passed last, approved last December, getting a number of some eight hundred plus signatures. I think the city would, I, I, I think I'm, I'm doing my best job for the city in suggesting that there be a smaller number in here. Uh, my, my recommendation would be to take the number of non-primary res- residence STRs reduced by twenty five percent. Not a dramatic number, but it's, it's clearly moving the number downwards. Um, that's a number that can be adjusted over time because I suspect that cap will be exceeded by the legacy properties probably for some period of a few years anyways. But it means we would be heading downward, downward trajectory on the numbers. So that, that was my sense of how to get to it.
Any comments on what those numbers might want to be? I think my recollection of our last meeting, we were fairly much in agreement to limit the number of short term rentals based on the historic numbers. And, uh, so I think we could plug those numbers in, I think we'd have a general consensus, but then Lee's proposing to reduce those numbers to reduce the number of construction renters in the future.
I like the idea of reducing it twenty five percent. Last meeting I was kind of looking at ten, but over the last week or so, twenty five percent was the number that kept coming into my mind.
We didn't talk.
Alright.
I'm in favor of leaving them where they are. I think that with an ordinance that has teeth to it, violations, if you will, neighbor policy violations and so on, I think you organic and the density, I think the density was, is a critical piece. When you have that, I think organically those numbers are going to come down. They're going to, you're going to have, so once you lose your license, if you did, um, when you're reapplying after two years, you're not doing it in the same spot, you, you can't, right? If, unless you meet the density requirement. So I think i- if we're looking at unintended intended consequences, I think that, that you know, the, the things that we put back in there, now what the city council does with that, but the things we put back in, we did purposefully and will, will over time organically make that number smaller. Unless somebody figures out better math, you know, some kind of distancing that, you know, pushes them around, but in that case, then we've achieved another goal, which is the, you know, the de-densification of these SCRs. So I don't know that, uh, my thought, my, I guess position is I don't know that you need to slash right away. And I'm not sure how you would do that. I mean, you could just make a number, right? You can get to a number and then for years, you, you may never achieve that number because people behave better and they keep their application going, so there's no, there's no guarantee you're going to, it's just a, a number on paper.
Uh, you know, that's true, my suggestion usually twenty five percent, that's not going to drop anything by twenty five percent instantaneous.
No, yeah.
It would be, it would be slowly over time.
Yeah. But it, yeah, so it may or may not, may or, may or may not work, depending on the behavior and so on and the reapplication.
So I'm kind of opposed to Lee's suggestion, um, without additional data, I'm kind of in the camp that if you eliminate the problem STRs and the
Right.
STR problems that are causing neighbors to have issues, why would you not let a person continue to operate in STR if they're not causing any problems in a neighborhood? So the policies that we're putting in place to eliminate STRs based on them causing a problem for their neighbors is more of the way I would prefer to go, so that we get problem STRs out of neighborhoods where neighbors are having problems with them, but not penalizing people or reducing the economic impact. We did hear from people in the city who work in this business, that that's their income. That's how they make their money, that's their livelihood, cleaning up STRs, property management, whatever. And to say, we're going to do away with a portion of your business opportunity, not because they're causing a problem for anybody, but because we don't want you to have an STR in our town. And I think there's a criteria that if they're not violating the good neighbor policies and they're not causing a problem in their neighborhood, why should they be forced to be reduced? Only to me, if they're causing a problem, they're not following good neighbor policies. I mean, I have neighbors who are going to have an event with cars parked on the street or noise later than eleven o'clock at night from time to time. But that doesn't mean, okay, we're going to reduce how many houses can be sold and people live in them in my neighborhood because it bothers me once in a while. No, they get to live there, so why can't somebody still operate their vacation home as an STR? I keenly look at this as a Colorado, what's one of the biggest industries, tourism. People want a vacation here, people buy vacation homes here. I moved into a neighborhood where people own vacation homes, they don't live there all the time. It's just the matter, that's where we're at. So again, what do we want the town to look like? And I think there's enough people that have problems with STRs that they said we don't want them in the neighborhoods, but if they're not causing a problem, I mean, the one that was in my neighborhood, I didn't even know it was there. So it doesn't bother me, so I'm on the camp to satisfy by saying we're going to limit the disruptive behavior of STRs in neighborhoods and make it so that those STRs cannot continue to operate. Rather than saying, you can't buy a house here, you can't use it as an STR, we're not going to allow it.
Right.
I just think it's a personal choice of somebody who wants to buy a property and a house. And I, I do believe STRs are in residences, but I expect people to vacation here and there to be some business from tourism in this town that I can take advantage of as a resident because the restaurants will stay open, the stores will do better, I'll be able to have more services and things here because tourists come here. And if we're saying we're not going to do that, that, so I'm just representing that perspective
Yep.
of the town as a counterpoint to your perspective of, hey, I'm, I'm living here, I don't want tourists in my neighborhood, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
I think there's another large portion of the community who probably doesn't have an issue with STRs, even though there's a bunch that do. I think let's eliminate the problem, STRs, but not say we can't have a.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I agree with you, Ken. Um, in short, we're, we're limiting the quantity. We're, we're improving the quality and we're, um, de-densifying, you know, over time.
Yeah.
And, and people have to recognize that, right? This is, this, you know, to your point, Lee, it's not going to happen right away. It, it'll happen organically as licenses either don't re, or as, as owners don't reapply or as violations occur. Right, so it's kind of like, uh, you, you almost want to set that in motion and see what that looks like, right? How, how that's going to play out. And I'm, uh, just on the record, I'm still, I'm still a little, I'm opposed to not regulating or at least capping the, not the alternate, the other one, primary residence one, but, um, maybe I'm more on the fence on that now. Primary residence one, but, um, maybe I'm more on the fence on that now.
So I think for me, and just to be clear to what Lee is saying. Um, because I actually looked it up, it's thirteen point seven five. That would be reduced if we put that twenty-five percent in there, but this is only. If they've got violations or if they just don't reapply, it's just not allowing a bunch of people to come back in behind them. And I think that's been part of the problem before because we've never regulated it, it's just been a free for all, there's never been any rules. People are just coming and going and they're grabbing what they can. And so I half agree with Lee by saying, okay, you know, you have the potential to either make sure you're doing what you need to do. Make sure you're keeping up on everything and making sure that these people are behaving correctly. So there is a good neighbor policy, so there isn't a problem because there are people out here who would say. This is my livelihood, I'm going to take care of it because I can't afford to not pay attention, to not have these things happen because. I potentially might not get this renewed again, and I can't transfer it to a spouse and I can't transfer it to my kids and I can't just transfer it and try to get it in some other way. Or some other corporation, how they might, and so I think having. At least a little bit of teeth that this could be a possibility if, so he's not saying we're automatically cutting it by fourteen. You know, fourteen houses are gone, too bad, so sad, that's not what he's saying. What he's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, is that, you know, if you don't try to take care of your business. If you're not trying to take care of your livelihood, if you're not being a good neighbor, you could potentially lose this. And that has to be, there has to be some reality there for people to say. Oh, you know, because if I'm a business owner and that's my business and that's my livelihood, I'm going to take care of it, especially if I know I have the opportunity to lose that. And then what am I going to do? So there has to, there almost has to be a check and balance, I mean, we're not cutting everybody off immediately. But we're not living, you know, we're not letting everybody in either, it's not, it's not a floodgate kind of deal.
But that's the case today, even if we keep, stay with the numbers we have, there's no more than fifty-five in S R.
There's no new ones.
Yeah.
Either way, we go on this.
So the teeth is not cutting, is not cutting the number down. The teeth is the, the ordn- or the good neighbor policy, the violation. And the density, and those two, I think those are the two critical things, because if you did violate and you got suspended for two years. That house now has to go through the densification thing, and so. You know, there's the, I think that's where the teeth are, just cutting the number is sort of, it, as, as you even did, it's sort of arbitrary. It just says, okay, just no more of that, not that much.
You know, eh, you know. Frankly, the, the number is arbitrary. It seems to me that it is important that the ordinance make a statement, the same with the history we've seen in the past year in the city. Make a statement that we're reducing the number. Um, these are lodging businesses in residential zones that we're talking about. Um, can argue what the. The current zoning ordinance has to say about this, but, um, in any event, we're addressing it now. A lot. Ordinarily, businesses are severely constrained in residential areas. There's, there are some accessory businesses that are, that are allowed. Um, this, I thought was to try and recognize that in. Principal residence S T Rs, try and treat them much more gently. But where it's not a principal residence T R, the building is not a residence. It is, it's a, it's a lodging house, it's whatever, and it's, it's, it's something else, it's a business, it's, it's not the. It's not the use, it's expected in a residential neighborhood. People, people are in. You can reasonably expect that the properties in their S R neighborhood will be S Rs. And the urban residential and similarly in the P U D residential ones, so it's, um. Some of it's question principle, some of it's question stating which, what we're, what we're trying to do here is, and we're trying to. Reduce the impact of these, reduce the number because. Um, it's, it's the wrong use in the given zones. And it's the wrong use, a number of people seem to find objectionable reasons I can, I can understand.
And does very little, this ordinance does very little to address what the concerns of the citizens were back in December.
I disagree with that.
I disagree too, there's caps, there's.
Every, every concern that was brought up as to why we don't want an S T R in our neighborhood. Has, well, when we just discussed it. Had the concern about that, either put in the ordinance or was planned to be put in the good neighbor policy. The only one that we can't do is that you can get to know your neighbor. Whether it's an S T R or not an S T R, we cannot put anything in the ordinance that allows you to know your neighbor. That was one of the complaints was, you don't know our neighbor, well, if it's a vacation home.
Right, and.
We can't make it that where they're going to know their neighbor necessarily either, and there's people who don't want to be neighborly. So we can't regulate that, that's the one that people complain about, but.
That, that may be among the most important ones too, because.
I mean, that's the one that I think was mentioned the most.
An ordinance, draft ordinance floating around by ref- by, by petition now. Which, um, which would essentially prohibit S T Rs. Yes, in, in residential zones.
Yep.
Once I think you're hard pressed to find any way, because if I'm not a very friendly person, I don't want to know my neighbors, I don't want them to know me. So, and I'm, and I might not even have a business, it just might be my.
I mean, that's going to happen anyway.
Yes.
Well, the other thing is there's some homes that are more suited to. An S T R or a vacation home, by the way, the way they were built. And they were here before any of these people that have complained about them were alive, so we did hear about that. So I just bring that up. That Colorado has had vacationing and tourism going on in this town and others, and I'll. I won't say I know it for a fact, but I would put money on more towns in. Colorado allow S T Rs in residential zones than don't. Just because of the nature of the economies, where money comes from, how they get their economics. It's, I think economically it's better for our town to allow some additional tourism other than what the hotels will support.
I, Ken, I, I, I agree with you. And, um, I would, I would not like to see the. The citizens' petition ordinance that's going in be, be adopted, I don't, I don't think that would, I don't think that would be good. Um, I, I think it would be helpful overall if this ordinance could be described.
And I don't disagree that your approach would be more palatable to those citizens who. Brought up the issue and the petition. It's still not what they asked for, but it's closer to getting in the direction of what they were looking for, so I don't disagree that. And that group would be more satisfied with that.
The density restriction is, 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 is important. I, uh, um, I, I know that's, there's some. It's part of the explanation why you're comfortable leaving the, the caps at the current level because. Over time, that density restriction will, will help, will help spread out those that are remain.
Yeah, exactly, so. Uh, you have a hundred and fifty-four S, S T Rs, the number's gone down actually since I've seen them, but you have a hundred and fifty-four S T Rs in the city overall. And if you look at the residential zones, the fifty-five and thirty-seven appears. And then, yeah, let's just, we can focus on those, there, I mean, that's the primary location for the, the number of S T Rs. And over time, that, and that, I think the plea would be to city council to maintain that distance. That density. Um, factor, because that will start to dictate. How many you can actually have, right, that'll really start to legislate, regulate, um, more than anything. And we know where those S T Rs can go. And how many you can have. If they, so, yes, I'll go back to that, and I will say too, I like, I loved your point, actually, last time we met. When you indicated, I think it was the, um, accessory dwelling units already have that distance restriction on them, so.
There is, exactly, there are only so many within, so many feet.
Right, and so, great, you know, we have, we have precedent. And we can move forward with that model, we should be moving forward with that model.
Okay, and can I ask if, um, just, just for my food, for thought. If they get into trouble and they've got police violations and, you know, good neighbor citations and, and blah, 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 right? And then they're not supposed to be able to reapply for two years, correct?
Mm-hmm, are, um.
It says it's going to be two years.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's two years, but I don't exactly how it's, it's worded in terms of. Suspended or.
Yeah. Can they, but so my point I'm just asking them and just clarifying, can they transfer that to? Another person before that happens?
No.
They're not transferable.
Not transferable.
No, they, they can always sell a property, but then the property then, if the gap goes through the process, anywhere the caps are.
Right.
And the distance restrictions.
No, I just want to, I just want to make sure that the language is in there somehow.
The property taints, it affects the, that, that owner.
Exactly.
Okay, um. There's a, a couple nuances in there, um, if it's. Uh, a license in one of, it's, if it's one of the legacy licenses that doesn't comply with current terms and conditions. Uh, especially in those zone districts where they're not permitted. Um, I'm not sure what the legal ruling would be in terms of how, how the ordinance gets applied. If it's in a zone district where, uh, you can, um, do have an S T R. Um, I, and it's, it's a, a primary residence S T R. It seems to me that would be just that suspension for two years and then they come back and, and reapply and are they meeting all the, the criteria? I don't know that there's a, the way it's currently written, I'm not seeing any legacy provision, um, associated with a suspension. But I would really need, um, the, our city attorney to, to elaborate on that.
When we discussed this, there was no intent to provide a legacy provision, once you've lost your license, you're back square one. There's no opportunity for you to have any legacy privilege to get it back.
The, the challenging thing related to that though is right now, the way it's worded is if a short-term. Rental business license is revoked pursuant to the subsection of revocations and suspensions. Uh, such revocation shall be in effect for a minimum of two years.
So, so it doesn't deny that.
That's the short-term rental management business. It's, it's not a taint to the unit, it's a taint to the owner, the owner, the owner's ability to continue. Getting a permit for that business is then affected for the period of two years. If he wants to sell the property, he could sell the property to somebody else and they can make, make application. If, if their cap, if they happen to be one in a zone where it's not permitted. Then, then it won't continue on, if they're in the zone where it's permitted, they'll take a look and see if there's a number available under the cap still, still available.
And dense.
And, and the density.
Yeah.
Well, so maybe then if they are non-transferable and, and we're not just allowing people to just kind of give them to other people. Right, maybe waiting on the fifteen percent to see, you know, maybe our two-year revise, maybe we can come back in again and say, okay, this is out of control. This is happening, we need to, we need to put tighter constraints on this. Maybe would that be the appropriate time, that way we have better data on how things are happening.
On the, you're talking about on the reduction of overall, or?
Yeah, on that fifteen, like if we decide if we vote on the fifteen percent.
I think we leave the same point, but just.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent, yeah, yeah.
Realistically, I, I don't expect you're getting a whole lot of places or. The, perhaps permits revoked because of multiple citations. And I'm not, I'm not sure the average, the average, average resident is counting how many times there's citations. Or is, or counting other, other factors like there's a lodging next door. It's more.
I don't even know if they'd be privy to any of that. Because I mean, if a police officer came out and it's up to him whether or not he cites, all they're going to see is an officer's there, how would they know there was an actual citation? Just the, the police have been there five times and there could have only been one, you know?
When and how is the license revoked?
That's addressed, um. Uh, bottom of page five, top of page six, there's a, a section there that deals with the vacation suspension. And it is actually a, um, hearing. In front of city council, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, within ten days of written notice, yeah, yeah.
Not something that's going to happen very often.
Well, what I've heard, I've heard good arguments on both sides of this issue. And I can agree with both sides of the issue, I, the points that I hear, and. I guess my concern would be that, uh. We have to make a decision on which number is the magic number or we don't reduce them all, that's, that's what we're going to be asked to do. Same time, like I said, I see good points. I'd also like to be able to present a ordinance, uh, to the city council. That they would understand that we spent a lot of time again talking about these issues. And we, we want to present them, uh, the, in order that they, they could look at and say. This is what we had in mind, this is, this meets the concerns of both. The owners and, and, and the public, uh, not wanting them, so. I guess as a, as a mean to try to reach a compromise, we could look at those numbers. And we could reduce them, uh, for instance, the, um. Number of units in the S R zone could be reduced down to fifty, which is certainly less than twenty-five percent. But it's not quite where it wants. And then the one for U R could be reduced from thirty-seven to thirty-five. And again, trying to find a middle ground that we can present to city councils, say, we can accept this the way it is.
So just to add a comment to that. Uh, to me, that's. Too watered down. We're going to reduce it at all, it should be a significant number over the.
That's, that's my sense too, to reduce.
Twenty percent maybe a better.
Three, isn't.
Right, neutral territory, but twenty or twenty-five percent would probably be. A number that would be significant enough to be worth putting forward. So I would either go with the number that we have or a bigger number.
Yeah, twenty-five percent, fifty-five, token number forty-two.
So that's just a comment.
Yeah.
If the majority of the planning commission would. Want to reduce the number, I would make it a significant number, if it's majority of the planning commission thinks we should go with the city council's. Original recommendation to just put the number out there that is existing today. And I would just go with that number, I would, I would. Do it in between.
Well, I'll get off this, uh. Onery, um. I would agree with Ken's comment that, uh, a couple here and there doesn't make much sense, I think a more significant, uh. What are the numbers at twenty-five percent reduction?
That would be forty, forty-two, thirty-eight. And four in the far end beauty.
Oh, actually, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-two, twenty-eight. Oh, like twenty-eight, sorry.
Uh, as far as the issue, as far as getting rid of the bad players in the organization, I think. Regardless of the number we set, we're working towards that. With limitations, a good neighbor policy, that, so. I don't see a difference either way in that argument, I think we're, we're working towards that and they're a good, good method. Uh, the question is, in the future, are we looking to reduce the number of units? And if so, then we reduce the number and then the legacies will gradually get us there through. Whatever attrition occurs, uh, it's, it's going to be a long process, I think.
Either way, yeah.
Either way.
And so there was an offer by the city council.
It's easier to add more later by the way than it is to take it down.
Yeah, there is a, an offer by the city council to do an economic impact study. Related S T Rs and to collect data on complaints. Related S T Rs from police complaints or whatever source they're going to use. So those two options that they wrote into the original ordinance, which they were saying, we should do this before we make further decisions. I would kind of agree with it, before we decide, we want to reduce them. Um, I think getting rid of problem ones, we definitely want to do. And then the economic impact to jobs and people who live here, who are citizens, who have businesses. Should be understood before we decide, as a community, we want to reduce that. Whatever that is, that income stream, that economic impact. I think we should know what that is before we say arbitrarily we are going to reduce it. Um.
Do we know?
Again, I'm still of the mind that. Almost all, if not all, of the issues that people had with STRs can be. You know, it's. The one complaint that I've heard is that the citizens have to complain. Before they're gone, if we just get rid of them, then we do their job. Just say, we're not gonna have them, and that satisfies that group of people, but it then. It's gonna get, you know, it goes the other way, we reduce jobs, we reduce economic impact, we. Do away with people's rights to do what they want with their property arbitrarily without, as Rusty Neal put it, due process. So. Anyway, I, I would like to have the economic data and more information before I decide, I wanna reduce the number. Over time by attrition, however, I just wanna reduce the bad ones.
Have they started that or worked on it or got it passed this idea, do you know?
I don't know if they've approved, uh, a budget spend to do the economic impact, I thought maybe they had, but I don't know for sure.
I'm not certain of the exact status of that, and.
It was part of that ordinance and it never got approved.
And the other piece of that is we have a moratorium in place on issuing new licenses. So I'm not sure how that's factoring in, I, I just, I just don't, I don't know what the, the, the status is.
Okay.
So what would it take to change these numbers in the future? Does it come back to commission and we negotiate the numbers and make another presentation to council? Or does council have the ability to make those modifications, this ordinance?
Did we leave the line in about the caps being reviewed by the city council every, periodically or whatever?
That's, that's, that's in there. Caps are in the section, title five, section, business license, we don't ordinarily see unless it's wrapped together with zoning. Really have a, not so much that clear, it's going back to us, make those changes.
Yes, and it is because of the way it's written and where it's located, uh, since the actual cap number, whether it's a number or a percentage. Is included in title five, which is the business licensing. Changes to that particular provision of city code does go through a public hearing process, but it's just in front of city council. It's title eighteen that comes through planning mission, uh, the zoning aspect of things.
Right, I guess. If the economic impact is determined to be important, the controlling factor, and if that's. Suggests more, it's easier to raise these numbers higher later than to create. New legacies when you're trying to reduce it later on and such too, it's. Realistically, if fifty-five became forty-two. Two years from now, it's probably still gonna be in forty-five to fifty, and so it's, it would have hurt, but would put ourselves in position if somebody wants to allow more, they can. They can do so.
I have a feeling that'll be the topic of discussion, what they want the cap at, they'll change, the city council will adjust it to what they wanna put in there. Regardless of what we send forward. Like I said, your idea may not have been. Considered by them yet, so by presenting it that way, they'll consider it. Even if they go back with their original numbers, if we just give them the original numbers, it may not get considered unless it's brought up as a topic.
And, and the, the density, we're asking them to. To.
Yeah, they didn't.
To return it to the ordinance.
Yeah, we didn't, they, we, we had no traction with them on that first go around, so. See it again, that'll probably be a bump for them to have to address, but. Um, if, if we have a work session or some kind of discussion with them, we can tell them why. Um, it's that one guy who starts to get surrounded by them that we're concerned about.
Do we have any other issues to discuss besides the actual numbers to plug in here?
I don't have any, no.
I, I, I did have a question, um, it's not an issue, uh, but should a, a neighborhood decide? To enact an HOA and then. Ban STRs? Um, we're, they're able to do that, right? I mean, the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's the best way, but they have to get unanimous agreement put in.
New HOAs.
HOAs.
You can never modify.
It's hard to get it.
Impossible, it's practical.
And then, do we have any language around the deed, the type of deeds or. The type of property deed that the. Uh, particular property is under, is, does, would that?
What do you mean by deed?
Well, you know, the way that the, the property was divvied. Is that?
There is language, the attorney's drafted, dealing with the fact, if it's held by a trust or it's held by a business entity as well.
Okay.
And look through to the, the trustees, the legal trustee, the principal resident.
Okay. Yeah, the name on the, on the. Or who, so who's involved with the? Business entity? Are we getting down to the name of the person, or are we just talking about a business entity?
I believe it goes down to the individual.
Yeah, I remember I said your name.
Oh, they hold me property. Okay.
Well, I would suggest you see where we're at and let the majority decide which way we send it forward and then we can put the numbers in, cause. I'm not gonna. Stop the ordinance from going forward and, well, I can't, that's a single person, but I'm not gonna object, the majority wants to go with one way. We, we send that ordinance forward, cause it's, it's a good ordinance, it's got a lot of the things we need in it to, to do this. And whichever way we, as a planning commission, agree to send it, I would go either way. I'm not. Stuck on one way or the other, I just don't want it, I'm not the one who wants to do the reduced, I want the existing number.
We had some.
So I.
Responses to try to reduce it by two or three, a kind of handful of things, is do we have at least two propositions in front of us, one is. The num, the number. Numbers based on the current, and the current non, non-resident STRs. Or current resident, non-STRs minus twenty-five percent. Is that?
That's, I agree that those are the two that make the most sense.
Okay, this is a formal motion too, but some.
Well, you're in a work session, so I'm really looking for kinda consensus guidance kinda thing. And I, let me back up the bus here and just recap ever so slightly. Um, so what I'm hearing is, um, no limits on the number of primary residence STRs potentially. So it is just the non-primary residence STRs that we are talking about capping.
Correct.
Okay, um, so then the next point is, um, do you want to set up that cap as a percent? Or as an actual number? Okay, so from there, then, I, like I said, I just wanna make sure we were all on the same page, so from there, we're to, um, Lee's point of whether it's. The existing number according to the existing, you know, with the existing number of licenses that are out there, or. Do you wanna reduce it?
Exist.
Right, so.
That's the question.
Well, and then.
The two options that we are settled on.
If you're gonna reduce it, then we can go into like by what amount?
I'm like, present a reduced number to council, near their consideration.
Okay.
Their adjustment.
I'm, I'm in favor of going with the existing numbers that the council gave back to us.
I'm in favor of that as well.
At least four of you.
I was waiting to go around.
Cause he wants to be the tiebreaker.
Or Don was next. I, I, I'm in favor of presenting the numbers at twenty-five percent less.
As, as am I, to reduce it as well.
Three, two, right now.
Uh, me too. Yes, I'm confirming with you that I want to reduce it.
We don't need to ask Larry. Oh wait, Larry counts as two of us, right? No, Larry counts as three, which way?
Okay, so.
Majority that's spoken already.
Okay, okay, so I'm hearing the consensus on that was to go with reduced number than what is currently there. So.
Yes.
And by what? Twenty-five percent is what.
Twenty-five.
I'm okay with.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that gets us to, um, a cap of forty-two. Uh, and these are non-primary residence STRs, so a cap of forty-two in the suburban residential district. A cap of twenty-eight in the urban residential district, and a cap of four in the PUD zone.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we will get those changes put together and an updated. Hack it out to you all tomorrow. For your hearing next week unless somebody, I'm sorry, does something else.
Well, we have, uh, I have nothing for the discussion tonight, uh, any reports?
No, I'm tired.
I got nothing. And Lee has already given her marching orders to change stuff, so she's got.
Any commissioners have any other comments?
I wanna say that, uh. The process we've gone through, uh, from the very beginning until. You know, the public hearing next week, you know, has been an extraordinary process and a learning process, certainly for me. Hope everybody learned quite a bit from this experience, we should, cause. And I think Ken said at the last meeting, you know, it's just a. An exercise in trying to reach compromise and trying to negotiate. We should move this to the federal government. To, to, to come, to come, to come to a. Close consensus as we've possibly got. I want to congratulate everyone doing. And I also wanted to say that, uh. I'm going to, I, I support the ordinance, uh, as we have. Put this together, as we modify, change it, so on and so forth. However, I won't be able to attend the public hearing next week, but I wanted to let you know that I. Find this ordinance acceptable as presented. Wish I could be there, but. I will be able to.
Miss you, Larry.
I know.
Uh, it's seven thirty-one, meetings adjourned.